Good evening. I am Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Ranchoes to Albuquerque. Welcome to our Village of Los Ranchoes Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, streamed via Zoom and Facebook. It's August 12th, 2020. The time is 7 o'clock PM. To remain in compliance with the State of New Mexico Public Health Order dated July 13th, 2020, and amendments thereto, the Village of Los Ranchoes to Albuquerque is live streaming this meeting on its Facebook page through Zoom video teleconferencing, and participants can join telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website. I'm going to move to item two of our agenda and call the role. Trustee Rael.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Pacheco.
Here.
Trustee Rickabini.
Here.
Item three, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
More approval of the agenda.
I need a second.
Second.
I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna move to item four, public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Participants will also be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items for the open session as they come up. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. Danielle will read the submitted written comments on behalf of the following. Robert Bob Kears. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. I'm reading this on behalf of Robert Kears, 7037 Guadalupe Trail Northwest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees. This letter is in addition to the photos I took of the bus stop shade structures on Fourth Street that I left with Ms. Simon. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I wrote this in lieu of speaking during your trustee meeting. Several weeks ago, I noticed rust on one of the new steel shade structures adjacent to a bus stop on Fourth Street. Further investigation revealed some degree of rust on all of the shade structures, some extensive and some minor. All of them were rusty at the base where dogs had used them as a rest stop. I contacted Ms. Simon who sent me to Ms. Rinaldi. Her return phone call said that powder coating should last longer than that. I agreed. She had her engineer look into it with a subsequent return phone call that the coating on the structure was a wax oil thing, and he was not concerned as he would have the contractor touch it up. Does that mean the contractor will apply more wax over the rust? Will he return each year to touch up the rust areas? Blacksmiths, which I am one, use a linseed oil slash wax mixture to coat hot iron for items that will be kept indoors. But exterior exposure of linseed oil in New Mexico's strong ultraviolet light is only good for six months to a year. When I was in the coating business, we routinely applied 30-year paint jobs to steel. I know of one bridge job over I-25 that we did in the early 80s that is still in very good shape. Powder coating is more expensive but lasts longer than that. Why in the world would the village spend tens of thousands of dollars on shade structures and then apply a protective coating good for only a year? Is the village prepared to recoat them via maintenance personnel every spring? And worse than that, a regular coating cannot be applied over wax as it is a separation median for molds and coatings. The wax will have to be removed in its entirety by sandblasting before any other coating can be applied. Are we going to allow sandblasting on Fourth Street? Of course not. To do that safely, Fourth would have to be shut down, cranes used to remove the structures, then halt to a facility that has a large dust-controlled sandblasting booth, recoded, and then reinstalled. How many thousand dollars will that cost? I know what I speak as we did sandblasting as part of our coating business, including the bridges at Cochati Lake that are 300 feet above the lake bed. Was the original plan to allow the steel to rust so that people using them can rub rust onto their clothing? Are there any original concept notes on the choice of this extremely inferior coating? What am I missing here? As you can tell, I am extremely upset at what I have seen to date. Sincerely, Robert Bob Kears. Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. That's the only written comments that have been submitted to me.
I want to thank Bob Kears for submitting that comment to the Village. We will certainly take his comments and advisement under under review. At this time, we have Mr. Joe Craig. Please state your name and address for the record. Joe Craig, are you on the call? Are you on this Zoom meeting? Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Trustees, I participated in the special meeting, the planning and zoning that the Commission had about two weeks ago. I was signed up to do participate in the discussion. Unfortunately, the Commissioner Lynn Eby made a unilateral decision not to allow discussion, and I was forced to do a public comment, which I was not prepared for. The meeting was not posted with a as per the Attorney General on an agenda, and the agenda was changed. I let Attorney Winter know about this, and I was ended up, ended up being cut off from the the presentation by either Lynn Eby or by Kiko. Disturbing along with the other meetings that we've had with no agenda posted. We now, I've made a comment to Attorney Winter that the agenda items have to be posted on the internet as per the Attorney General. I think our previous three meetings are invalidated because we're not doing that. I got a comment back from Danielle that she posts on your court board on the outside of the building. In this pandemic, I mean, that's unacceptable, and it doesn't meet the Attorney General's requirements. Additionally, there's some disturbing emails that I've found some time back about the Village Center with the planning and zoning, doing a setting the stage email to direct the zoning on it. We have AX Propane with a discussion coming up later on in this meeting that the planning and zoning approved along with trustees, and I believe Commissioner Rickabini was in, or Trustee Rickabini now was in that meeting. We approved that as C1 and the 300 feet to the south of AX Propane as commercial mixed-use high-density at the request of the administration. The Gateway Center, which is in my neighborhood, has changed dramatically. There was a lot of misinformation in the planning and zoning regarding the Gateway Center planning. I was unable to comment on that. I'm unable now to pull up the 2020 Master Plan, which should reflect those items. It has been hacked and taken down off your website. I don't know what's going on. The concern that I have, and I'd like to speak with you, Mayor, and I'd like to speak to Attorney Winter, that there is a lot of things that have gone on in the past administration on our planning and zoning that really need to be addressed. I believe we should hire in a forensic urban planning group to review what was approved by planning and zoning, by the trustees, what actually got into our ordinances for these three different centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig, for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else on this Zoom call who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting?
I don't have any hands raised right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item five, presentations. There are none. We'll now move to item six, which is the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately from 6A or the minutes of the July 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for July 22nd with a correction.
Okay. Tell us what it is.
Correction is on page 13 of 172.
Okay.
The first paragraph under new business, it's referring to Schulte Road north to Pueblo Solar. It should be Pueblo Solano.
Okay. Any other corrections? I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion at this time? I'm gonna call for the question with the correction. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll now move to item seven, which is the departmental reports. The departmental reports have been provided to the Board of Trustees. Item 7B, the administrator report, and Simon wants to make a remark. Ann, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. I just wanted to add a few things to the report that weren't in the written comments. First of all, I know that in the minutes that you all just approved, Trustee Lewis remarked that oftentimes we don't circle back on issues that are brought up during the informal discussion. And one of those items was the, I guess for lack of a better bumpiness of the road on Chavez Road at the curve right when it hits, just before it hits Fourth Street. And I hope you all have traveled on Chavez Road in the last month and seen how, what a great job the the Water Utility Authority did in smoothing out the unevenness of that, of that road. So I just wanted to make sure you all saw that, that we finally took care of that, that problem. The other thing is, we have some updates on our capital outlay. I was really excited, and we all were really excited to hear that the legislature unfroze the $250,000 that we were awarded in 2019 for the AgriNature Center. That capital outlay expires in 2023, so we're going to work very quickly and creating a notice of obligation. We're going to contract with Knight CV, who's the architect, to help us with some drawings and give us a little better sense of how we can move forward and make that center a little bit more fully functioning. Also, you'll notice in our, in our check report, we have some large bills for a large cleanup of a property that had been a problem property for for many, many years, more than 12 years, and we were really happy to be able to clean that property up and will be recouping all of the funds from that property through a lien on the grant, on the on the on the property. Finally, we got a $3,000 grant from USTA, which is the United States Tennis Association for keeping our courts open during COVID. So I thought you might all appreciate hearing that. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ann. Do any of the members of the governing body have a question for Ann or a question about any of the departmental reports?
I have, I have a question for Ann, and then I have a question on several of the departmental reports.
Sure.
If you want to take them in order, how you would like to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd like for you to go ahead and ask all of your questions. So go ahead and start with Ann, and then we'll go through it.
Okay. Ann, in your report, you talk about getting the the stormwater project that continues to go on, and you're gonna do a couple of French drains on Ayah del Parrito. Some time ago, in our informal discussion, I brought up, and I'd like to, you know, a number of people have reached out to me from Enchanted Belly Circle and wanting a French drain there, so I would just like to put in that hopefully it stays on the radar. And then, secondly, I had some questions. Well, first of all, let me congratulate you on a great job on Chavez Road. That is, it's almost unrecognizable how smooth it is compared to what it used to be. And then, thirdly, and I think it's probably later in the meeting when you want to talk about the CARES Act and funds and that stuff, so those are my questions for Ann.
Okay, go ahead on the next set of questions.
Okay, the next one is for Fergus. I wanted to get a little more description on the grants for the Soil Program Grant and the New Mexico Gas Company Grant. If we could get some more information on that.
Fergus, are you on the call?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Trustees. Good evening, Trustee Lewis. First question was, can you repeat the first question again?
Sure. I wanted to know more detail on the Soil Program Grant and more detail on the New Mexico Gas Company Grant. So the first one is the Soil Program Grant.
So the Soil Program Grant is with the NMDA. It's on the five healthy soil principles. We're working with the New Mexico Soil Initiative to help us with the grant. So it's basically to try and set up a soil program at the AgriNature Center to include composting different types of composting, so just a basic home composting piece of equipment, a tree bay composting facility for kind of a farm. And then we're looking at Johnson-Sue Bioreactor. This is a guy in New Mexico that makes really good compost that you spread on the field, and then it helps with the growth of your crop.
Awesome.
And we're also looking at doing different, different cover crops on our fields as well.
Good, good. And then the New Mexico Gas Company Grant?
Yes, that was kind of economic development slash agriculture. We spoke to me, Dan Jerry, who's on our Aligning Our Agri-Future Committee, met with Mary Holman, who was generous to give us a bit of an extension for this grant. And the grant is, when we did the Aligning Our Agri-Future, we worked with Steel Benders to NMSU on looking at their processes to try and look at efficiencies at Steel Benders. So it's kind of looking at agriculture-type businesses that they can kind of improve their processes.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Fergus.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Go ahead, Alan, Trustee Lewis.
Okay. Next one is for Tiffany. A couple of things in her report. One, Tiffany, I would like to get some more detail on the activity in your department. You know, how many residential permits, what type of, you know, if houses are being built, what type of houses are being built, what price range are being built in? I would like to get some more detail on what kind of applications and permits are being issued. Secondly, on further in the financials, there's a, there's a significant expense of $27,000 on engineering that I would like some explanation for. So those are my two questions for Tiffany. One question and one suggestion, I guess.
Tiffany, go ahead.
Trustee Lewis, Trustee's Mayor. So I will definitely in the next report include more information on the types of permits that are going through the department. I'll be doing that. I'll, I'll do a recap for the past couple of months, and then after that, do a monthly update.
That'd be great.
For the expense, I will need to to give me a moment, just so that I could look at that quick.
True. Or if you want, Tiffany, when we get to financials, we can circle back around to it.
Me, Alan.
Sure.
This is, isn't that the $27,000 that was used for the cleanup on the Scosa, I believe? It was listed as engineering, but it was actually the cleanup for that. I believe it was a home that had hoarders in there, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe Ann Simon can answer that.
Ann?
Mayor and Trustees, that is correct. That was our large cleanup project, and we will be having another bill equally as large, unfortunately.
Okay, but we do have, we are leaning the property.
We are.
Okay, okay. Great. Tiffany, you're off the hook.
At least on that, huh?
Yeah. Pablo got you off the hook. Next, my question's for Maria. And it's just pertaining to the change orders and a little more description and more detail on Fourth Street. And, and any comments on Mr. Kears' statement regarding the paint job?
Maria, are you on the call?
Mayor and Trustee Lewis, Maria has been excused. She was ill this evening. And we are still researching the issue of rusting. I think it's puzzling all of us. So Mr. Kears brought it to our attention, and we have not yet been able to fully wrap our heads around what's happening there. So we are on top of that.
And a little more on the status of Fourth Street, some change orders and some
Yeah.
finalizing some things. So yeah, just getting a better, a little more detail on that.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can, we can follow up with you on that.
Okay, and then another question I had was on the Village Center. Do we, do we have a proposed plan from the developer? Are we just still in negotiations for the contract? And then we'll start getting into a serious finalized plan?
Mayor, Trustee Lewis, we do have a plan. We have a tentative plan. The developer isn't moving very quickly, however, because we don't have a development agreement with him yet. So we are working on, on putting something together. What we're trying to do is trying to assure that we're not unduly enriching him, that, that indeed the, the investment that he is making equates indeed the investment that he is making equates to less than the return on investment that we will get as a village. And so we're being very careful to put those terms in place. A lot of it might have to do with at what point we turn over key portions of the property based on where he can get his funding. For example, housing, his funding is all but secure. Next, he will be doing the senior housing, and then he will move into the retail. So we are moving forward. We were hoping to have something this meeting, but we will definitely have something for you next meeting.
So is his site plan further developed than I suppose it would be without a contract? Or is it still pretty general?
It's fairly fleshed out, and I'm sure we could, we could give you at least his initial pitch, and it's part, it was part of his proposal that he gave that was chosen.
Yeah, I know that one was pretty general at that time, which was to be expected. And so I just, yeah, I was just curious, is that something we can drop by and see?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The last question, Ann, on this report, the very last paragraph under other. If you could educate me, it says, continue monitoring or responding to requests for information. And at the end, it says, including CPMS reporting. What is CPMS?
I'm afraid I don't know that acronym.
I don't either.
Trustee Lewis, Mayor Trustee Lewis, this is Tammy. CPMS stands for Capital Project Management System, and it is the state system that we report to for any of our capital appropriations.
Ah, great. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy. And Mayor and trustee Lewis, if I could also just circle back on the on the issue of the French drains, we did, we did budget for seven or eight of those, so hopefully the folks at Enchanted Valley Circle will also get one or two.
Great. Thank you, Ann. That is all my questions.
Okay, go ahead, Pablo, trustee Rayel.
Okay, Marie Rinaldi's report on the second paragraph, the dollar amounts, first one under contract is listed as $7 billion plus, and the balance completion is $231 million. And I think it just left a decimal point on and added a zero, it shouldn't be, it should be corrected, amounts. And then I would like to recommend, as far as the roadway improvements on page 24, the $96,000 that we got for local government road improvements, I would like to recommend that Gardenia be one of the priority streets because they have been waiting for so long to get the potholes and cracks and filled in in their street, and it hasn't been done in years, and I think they should be a priority.
I agree completely.
I agree also.
Thank you. And also, just to back up on what Alan said on Enchanted Valley Circle, I have, I took Kelly when he was there many times to show him what needed to be done, but they never did anything, and they have been complaining about this for years, and they really do need those French drains there. They also need to paint the median or the middle of the road as you go into the circle because what's happened several times is it's been accidents because there's no markings, and people tend to cheat as they make the turns. So it would be, I think, safer if the road was painted and perhaps maybe as you turn to the right, going east, you could make a wider paving area there so that people have more room to turn because that's where the accidents have been happening.
Good comment, Pablo.
And that's all I have on that.
Okay, do any, do the other two members of the government, yes, trustee Pacheco, go ahead.
These are probably just some follow-up questions to what's already been discussed, but with regard to the French drains, I see that we kind of have a timeframe of fall. Does that mean, Ann, that these will all be installed before the end of 2020, or is this ongoing and may push out to 2021?
Trustee Pacheco and others, I, we have it scheduled for the fall. It is something that Keen has on his list to do with the guys. We, some of this work, we need to contract out depending on how the complexity of the project, but some we can do in-house. And right now, they're, you know, busy with the parks and so forth, and in the fall, their workload opens up a little bit, and we were just scheduling that for the fall. So yeah, so we're hoping to carry on and wrap this up by the end of the year.
Good. And so will we be able to put some kind of priority list with regard to the French drains as well?
We'd be happy to take a look at anything that you have.
Okay. Yeah, and I know that the residents on Calle del Pajarito have really, you know, they've been really patient, I think, over the last year, two years or longer in requesting the French drain, so I hope that that's one that's kind of put towards the top of the priority list.
Yeah, we intend to do those first.
Okay, awesome. And these may be questions for Maria, and I don't know that, you know, that we can answer any of them tonight, but with regard to the Fourth Street, the second paragraph, the pending, down at the bottom where it says a pending change order for the purchase and installation of additional flashing, pedestrian lights, and speedboards, do we know where those are? I'm sure we know where those are going to be placed. Can you let us know where those will be placed, Ann, do you know?
I don't know exactly. Mayor, I might defer to you on the placement, but we can certainly get back to you.
Well, I know, I know, trustee Pacheco, that we've already looked at locations, so I think we do have the answer to your question. Since Maria's not on the call tonight, I'd like to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Fred Rosso. I can tell you where the speedboards are going to go and
Good.
There will be three speedboards, one on each entrance into the construction area or the new promenade and all that stuff, one going northbound and one going southbound, one around Schulte, right around that area, the second one going southbound will be around Pravol Solano in that area, and then the third one is going to be on the north end of the village, past Ortega, to try and deal with that intersection of Ortega. So those will be permanent speedboards.
Thank you, Fred, for that. Let's see, so also on Maria's, on the AgriNature Center improvement with regard to the revised contract amount of $135,403, which is expiring on August 17. Has that been, have we used those funds at this point?
Mayor and trustee Pacheco, yes, we have, and we did that by providing sewer and water services from Rio Grande to the AgriNature Center.
So those have been completely exhausted, then?
Yes.
Okay. Number two of that same, under the AgriNature Center improvements, the 2019 legislative appropriation in the amount of $250,000 that was unfrozen, that does not include the previous $135,403, right?
No, it does not.
Okay, so that'll be new money to spend on?
Right.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Now, moving down to the Village Center project, and I think this was pretty much answered, but I was just curious how this is going to be presented to the board of trustees, you know, if it's going to be in an email or a meeting or if we just stop by. But I think that you answered that in saying that hopefully in September, we'll see that in our meeting, is that correct?
And Mayor, trustee Pacheco, the developer is, has also made himself available and is happy to come to a meeting and answer questions directly if we'd like that to happen.
Okay, great. Mayor, I think that's all the questions I have on the report.
Thank you. Trustee Ricabini, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of comments and a question. On the, on the, back to the Village Center project for just a moment, are we going to receive anything? Do we need to come down to your office to review the current, the current standing, or we need to wait for the meeting? Be hard to ask any questions if we don't have any, any documents that we've studied.
Ann, how do you want to answer that question? Maybe you already have.
Mayor, trustee Ricabini, yeah, I'm happy to send out what we have, although we don't have a development agreement yet, but I can send to everybody the proposal that was selected, selecting Palindrom as the developer. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so on the, on the agreement, what, what point are we in the agreement, and what timeframe will that, will that take, and what kind of things do we need to be looking at in order to finalize that agreement?
Well, trustee Ricabini and others, we are working with, with Nan Winter to make sure that whatever development agreement we, and we're also, we've contracted with a firm in Chicago, SB Friedman, that works on these kinds of agreements so that we make sure that whatever we put in place is fair. And we would give you all that agreement before the developer signs anything.
Okay. And, because really, before we really want to be talking to the developer, we should have that agreement in place, I would think.
Yes.
So the, when do we, when do we think that we might have a chance to look at that agreement in its draft form?
Trustee Ricabini and others, we are looking at next month. The developer is very anxious to get moving on his financing, and we don't want to let it go too much longer, so we're hoping for September.
Okay, all right. That agreement is very important, as we all know, and so I'd like to get a look at it as soon as we can.
Sure.
So we can review that, okay? That's, I think that's really important. The, just, and the other one is just a comment about the concern of Bob Kier's. I think that, you know, Bob is, knows what he's talking about, and I don't know what our specs were on those structures and how we're going to go about solving this, but if he's got a concern on that, then I would really pay attention to it.
I agree.
I'm not sure what our specs were, if it was not built to spec and we approved it or whatever the case may be, we need to flesh all that out, and I'm sure that's what you're working on right now. If it, if it was built, if it wasn't in the spec that it should be powder coated, we're still going to have to address this thing because that stuff will rust and fall apart here pretty quick. We don't want that to happen. So I really want to appreciate any citizen for bringing up concerns that they have. And in this particular instance, we're dealing with a professional's opinion, and I really want to thank Bob for taking the time that he did to, to look at that and bring that forward. That's, that's
Thank you, trustee Ricabini.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask one more question?
Sure.
Something that just came to mind, and that is, I was riding my bike down Rio Grande Boulevard. There's a number of patches south of Gregos where the patch actually is a little bit of a hump in the road. And when I rode by the entrance to the Village AgriNature Center, I felt like that was already starting to sink a little bit. Is that something that you guys are concerned with or have addressed?
We know about that, and actually, we are looking at it. Ann, have you talked to Maria about this recently?
No, Mayor and trustee Lewis, but it's my understanding that they were banking on, on a little bit of sort of compaction of the asphalt that was laid down right in front of the AgriNature Center. Is that, is that the patch?
Right. Yeah, that patch. It concerned me. I thought, man, this is already starting to sag a little bit. Not, you know, not a lot yet, but I thought these other patches all are still a little bit of a hump, and it concerned me. And I wanted to bring it to people's attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all my questions.
Okay. We now move to item eight, which is Financial Business Discussion and Approval of the Cash Report for July 2020. Treasurer Will Fisher.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see Treasurer Fisher on unless he called in.
Well, there is a phone number here, 505-660-0664. I'm hoping that's him.
Mayor trustees, that is Will's number.
Okay, can you unmute Will or ask him to speak at this time? Kiko?
Mr. Fisher, you have to unmute yourself on your end.
Yeah, he's muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Will. Give us your report.
Thank you all, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The cash report in front of you is for the month ending July 31, 2020. Ending balance, ending cash balance at July 31, 2020 is $5,223,881, which is an increase of $45,599.25 for this month. So year-to-date, that's an excess of revenues over expenditures of $45,599.25. Five unusual or significant items, mainly just large ticket items, are also there for your review. I'll turn it over. Any questions to Tammy? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there any questions on the cash report before I ask for a motion?
Sure, I have questions.
Of course.
First of all, if Will can still hear me, I sure would like them to address that line. I mean, you know, the second, the third line of the cash report, when it says year-to-date, deficiencies of revenue over expenditures, and I've never been able to get my head around that, and he even said, you know, the excess of revenues over expenditures, and I would sure like to see them address that line. So it's much clearer for everybody that it's, revenues are over expenditures or under expenditures.
They are over.
Right. I know that they're over, but I mean, when you say deficiency of revenues over expenditures, that just, that doesn't make any sense to me, and I would sure like to see that rewritten.
We'll take care of it.
Thanks. The next question I have is the following page, well, his last, on that page, the general fund fire, IGA for fire protection and NFs, we paid $113,300, our normal payment.
Right.
But you go to the next page on cash balances, and for fire protection and law enforcement, there's nothing in there on $113,300. It's an excess of $88,000. And so I'm trying to, I'd like somebody to explain that report to me. I'm not, maybe, maybe it just doesn't go there, but I'm trying to
Tammy, do you want to, you want to try to answer that question?
Yes, Mayor and trustee Lewis, I'm not sure exactly what page you're referring to, trustee Lewis, but that $113,000 is actually in the Department Fire, which is 2000, which is page 11 of the cash report.
Okay, but on the next, on page?
One of one.
Twenty-nine, one of one. So that, wouldn't that show up in Fire Protection Fund? Twenty-nine, one of one. So that, when that show up in fire protection fund? Tammy?
Um, trustee Lewis, no, it does not. That comes out of our general fund. The fire protection fund, that is something completely different. And that's actually a distribution that we get from the state that is for fire protection specifically. The 113,000 that we pay is an MOU we have with the county. So those are two separate amounts.
And two separate categories?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Should I keep going?
Yes.
So I had several questions, but I think they're all related to that it was a three payroll a month. But then I did have a question on page 36 or seven of 39, statement of revenue and expenditures for the general administration.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay. So there we show we had no payment to our attorney. And yet, when you go to the check register, there's a payment to the attorney. So I don't know if it's a timing issue where the attorney didn't cash it till August, or I was curious why it's not showing up in July's financials.
Did you hear that question, Tammy?
Uh, Mayor, trustee Lewis, yes, I did hear that question. And so the payment that you're seeing in the check register to the attorney, that is actually, if you see in the transaction description, it's for June 2020. So that's an accrual. So that would be, that's why it's showing, it's a check that got written in July, but it is accrued back into June.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Tammy. All right, let me go back to my questions here. Okay, you've answered that one on the fire protection fund. So on page 68 or 39 of 39, the summary. Okay, nevermind, you've answered that one. So I just have a few questions then in the check register. So Raul Candelaria, do we pay him for payroll? Is that why he's paid for three times? Because one of the checks says it's for August 1st to August 15th. So I was curious why we paid him in advance on that one?
Um, so Mayor, trustee Lewis, the reason why we paid him for that, he got the check after, when it was actually for August. However, due to the way we run checks now, we're only able to do it, sorry, we're only able to do it every two weeks. So we have, we run his check when we run payroll and we make sure that he gets it when he actually, for the time he's actually done. So it did get run with our payroll.
Great. One last question, Tammy. Woods EIS? Who, who is Woods EIS on the last page of the check register?
Uh, Mayor, trustee Lewis, that is the professional service engineer that we hired to look at the median work on Fourth Street.
Right. Okay, okay. Great. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from the governing body? You're muted, trustee Rayal.
Sorry. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Register on page 69 of 172, the, for the Bank of America is 900 some dollars for the, for an analysis. What does that entail?
Uh, Mayor, trustee Lewis, the bank analysis fee is the fee that we get charged from the Bank of America for our business accounts.
Pablo, Pablo, this is Alan. They, banks have a way of charging you for every check you write, every deposit you make, every transaction, they have little charges and then they total up to their analysis fee. In the old days, they used to charge a $200 fee. Now they went to this analysis. If the more you use them, the more they charge you.
Yeah. Okay. That's why I use credit unions.
I agree.
Age 72, 72. You already answered the Wood EIS. Right below it is empty waste USA. What is that? 400 or 356 dollars, no, 366 dollars.
Yes, Mayor, trustee Rayal, that is for the vacuum waste bags that we put around in all of the containers at the different parks and locations around the village.
Okay. All right. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees about the cash report? Being none, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the cash report.
I'll make a motion to approve the cash report for July 2020?
I need a second.
A second.
Any further discussion? Being none, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayal?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
I'm going to move to item nine, public hearings, nine A. Before I read a description of it, and perhaps, I think I can read it after Alan speaks. Alan, I understand you want to make a statement at this time.
Yes, I would like to make a statement. In honoring transparency, I just would like to say that on this item, I was the prior owner of this property. I sold it to the current owner. She's a friend. I do not know Mr. Shaw. I've not been in his business or the other business on the property. So I do have a prior connection to this property, but I think I can be unfair and biased in my decision, in my efforts on this issue. But I did want to, for the sake of transparency, make that statement.
Thank you, trustee Lewis. Let me read the item, nine A. ZMA 20-03A, request by Jim Shaw for a zone map amendment to change R2 zoning to C1 zoning for the westerly 100-foot zoned R2 as allowed by section 9.2.25 parentheses E, parentheses eight, for a property in the C1 and R2 zone in the Fourth Street character area. The property is located at 7226 Fourth Street Northwest and is legally known as Track B, La Esquina de los Rancho's within projected section 21, township 11 North, range 3 East, New Mexico Principal Meridian, Village of Los Rancho's to Albuquerque, Burnley County, as filed in the Office of the Burnley County Clerk on September 29th, 2008. The property contains 1.1226 acres more or less. Those speaking will be called upon, called upon and will be sworn in individually at their respective time. Ms. Winter, would, will you please swear in, Ms. Justice?
Tiffany, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Justice, please present the request for the zone map amendment.
Uh, yes, Mayor, trustees. So this request is for a dual-zoned lot. The front portion is zoned commercial and the back portion is zoned residential. The original request was to extend the commercial back to the entirety of the property up to the ditch. So the proposed site plan reflects this. However, the applicant amended their request to extend the C1 zone by 100 feet. And the, the motion reflects this change. There is a site development plan for this property. It includes the other track to the west of this. This site development plan, if it were to be amended, or if there were to be a new site development plan, would be public notice to everyone within 300 feet of the property. The same as this application. An amendment can be approved administratively with no adverse comment, and it would go to the commission if there were, if there were adverse comment. And a new plan would go before the commission and the board for approval. The applicant leases the building at the back of the property to operate a brew pub, approved by the conditional use CU 15-02. The conditions of that approval only stipulate the closing times. The property and the surrounding properties on the Fourth Street character area, the property to the east is unincorporated Burnley County. The surrounding properties, the front portion is zoned commercial and the back portion is zoned residential. And the following guidelines for this zone change would apply. So NMSA section 3-21-5A requires that the regulations and restrictions of any county or municipal zoning authority to be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And later on, I will reference the master plan. And NMSA section 3-21-5B says that the zoning authority should give reasonable consideration to the character of the district and its suitability for particular uses and to conserving the value of the buildings and land and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdiction. So the property is in the Fourth Street character area, and that this character area has a combination of residential and commercial uses and zone properties. So much of the east side of Fourth Street is zone C1 for about 300 feet. And behind that is zone residential up to the Chamosal lateral. And so granting of the expansion of the C1 zone would still retain this residential use along the lateral. And the remaining zoning that is residential would still allow for a residence at that zoning. There is some public interest in changing this zone. The village received comments both in favor and in opposition to this application. Fourth Street is the commercial corridor in the village, and to revitalize it, the village has invested in improvements, public infrastructure, as we discussed a lot earlier. This encourages development along the corridor. Expansion of the C1 zone along Fourth Street allows for a wider variety of development, including commercial mixed use and higher density residential. But with the zone change, the property would have a wider variety of development options, at least the portion that is zoned commercial. But in exchange, that development would also be reviewed by the governing body and neighbors would be notified. One of the concerns with the C1 zone is that the property owner could do anything that is permissive or conditional in that zone and not necessarily follow through with what they say they would do as part of this application. As a site development plan is a separate process than the zone change. This also stays with the property in perpetuity, not necessarily with the current owner. The Board of Trustees will not spot zone for private interest of the owner or applicant. In this case, this would not be considered spot zoning. The property to the west and the front portion of this lot is zoned C1. And the properties immediately to the north of this application are zones C1 through 150 feet from Fourth Street. The application for a zone change, however, is not warranted. So there's some conflicting evidence for this. So some of it will say that it is warranted in this case. Dual zone properties have to handle different development requirements on the same lot with residential in the back behind commercial. So this can create conflicts between these two different types of uses on the same property. And it also means that somebody who's accessing this back portion for a residence does have to go through a business area to get through, which that can reduce the desirability of the lot. The village's commercial zoning is a pretty narrow corridor along Fourth Street and expanding it allows for more potential commercial mixed use, higher residential, higher density residential uses. The applicant desires to expand their parking in this case, which is not allowed in the R2 zone. The uses allowed in the residential zone are uses which are residential, agricultural, or accessory to those uses. While parking is an accessory use, when it's an accessory to a commercial use, then it becomes commercial. So then it would require commercial zoning for that purpose. So with the zone change, they could do more than parking, but all development would have to be reviewed by the governing body and noticed to neighbors. The applicant's proposal for this expanded parking does, however, go beyond the minimum number that's required for parking spaces for this property. The site plan had 23 parking spaces, which met the number of required parking spaces back when this was developed. And also based on our current, it also exceeds what's required. The minimum number of parking spaces was also based on there being three more 900 square foot buildings there which weren't built. So just looking at the parking requirements for the current buildings on the site, the existing parking is about double of what's required. Some comments pointed to the use by both businesses for the same shared parking lot. The hours of operation for both businesses currently mean that there is three and a half hours Tuesdays through Fridays and six and a half hours on Saturdays of overlap, where both businesses are open and require parking. Outside of that, one of the other, one of the two businesses has used the entire lot. So the provision of more parking, the exact number of which is unknown, this can be partially accomplished through reconfiguration of the existing parking on the site development plan in the existing commercial zone. There were three proposed buildings that weren't built and instead are now landscaping. And this landscaping well exceeds what's required for the site. So additional parking spaces could be built where the proposed buildings were going to be. This would require demolition of a curb and removal of landscaping, which is going to be harder than just laying down on vacant land. But the space in the existing zone currently exists. And so depending on allowed occupancy of the buildings, that could be some reason to allow more parking beyond the minimum if the parking is a constraint against serving the maximum allowed occupancy. But we're not aware, department's not aware of the occupancy of the brewery compared to the number of parking spaces on site. There is support for the zone change within the master plan. The master plan recognizes that 300-foot guideline for commercial zoning is not a fixed value. So with all of that, the department recommends the board deny ZMA 20-03, request for zone map amendment to change R2 zoning to C1 zoning for the westerly 100 feet as allowed by section 9.2.25 E8 for property in the C1 and R2 zone in the Fourth Street character area, with the findings that the lot is dual-zoned, C1 and R2. The surrounding zones are residential and commercial, and the back portion of the lot would remain residential up to the lateral, keeping in character with the properties along the east side of Fourth Street and still allowing a single-family residence. But the application for the zone change is not warranted. The parking already meets the minimum requirement, and the site development plan can be reconfigured to add some parking in the current C1 zone. The zone map amendment is again supported by the master plan. No application to amend the zoning for the property has been filed within the last 12 months, and public notice requirements have been met. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Before I allow questions, I'd like to let the applicant have an opportunity to speak on the request. That applicant is Mr. Jim Shaw. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Mr. Shaw as, as soon as he is available? Are you on the call, Mr. Shaw?
He is on the call. One moment.
Uh, sorry, I apologize. I had one more thing to mention, since this was a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission recommended to approve, and that vote was five to one.
Thank you, Ms. Justice.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Uh, my name is Jim Shaw. I reside at 8425 Guadalupe Trail Northwest. Thank you for your time, Mayor, trustees. I would like to, to talk about a couple of points that I think are important. The, the, the idea that. The, the, the idea that, that because the two buildings were not constructed according to the, according to the site plan and that's, and that we would have been able to reconfigure our parking to gain more parking is, is, is like really not accurate. We have, those aren't landscape areas anymore. They have been, they have been approved by the village for, for outdoor seating. That's all we can have these days. And so, and so the entire area that's between the two buildings on the south side is already a fenced-in, picnic-tabled patio area, outdoor area to get people outside. And we don't know how long that's going to last, but, but it's a, you know, for those that's been there, it's a really nice outdoor space right now. People are enjoying being outdoors and I think that trend is, is going to be with us for a while. I think things have changed. Even if I didn't have patios there, if we, if we did demo the standing curb in the asphalt, which has about a, about a 12-foot drop to the existing landscaping and stuff, all that would kind of get us would be some more longer parking places. There wouldn't be any more room to, to add a third lane. So, we would already have, we have perpendicular parking places. I'm already there, but all we would end up getting would be a, a wider driveline and the exact same amount of, of parking lanes, parking spaces. So, and, and I know that, that, that we're asking for like more than what the village, what the village is, minimum parking requirements are. But for those of you that have been there and some of our customers are there, we have a, we have a parking need. My wife, I'm owns the hair salon up front and on certain hours, we do have overlap. She has four people renting a booth, three people renting a booth and herself. They have clients. We have, we have employees. And then, and then we have, and, and then we have customers. And so, we really do need this, this extra parking to, to sustain the business that we've, that we've developed in the village. And so, and my understanding of this, of this hearing is that, that it's just basically like a zoning hearing. And I know you're going to hear some comments coming up that are going to be talking about the landscape buffer, the fencing requirements, the 400 feet. All those are conditions that I will have to abide by when we get the site plan approved. And I'll have to abide by the 400 feet. Anything that's in the code that talks about landscape buffering or any solid fencing, if it's in the code, I'm going to have to abide by it and I understand that. I think, I think that might be my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Schull. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schull at this time? Trustee Pacheco. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Schull, for your, for your presentation. I'm looking at the property probably from a Google Earth map point of view. So, the, the two buildings that were proposed to go on this property, when I'm looking at it from, from kind of the top down, where were those two buildings supposed to go?
They were in between the two existing buildings in that long, narrow strip that would abut the, the old motel property and our, and our parking lot. It's, it, it's about 18 feet wide and I want to say it's probably 60 feet long.
Okay, so it's, it's kind of the parking where, where there's like a parked car in a, pulled into like parking lot?
Yeah, it would be, it would be in front of the, of the parking lot. It would be south of the row of cars that you see that are already striped right there. It would be in that landscaped area between the motel to the south and the curb and the asphalt that would be to the north. That was the space where those buildings were proposed.
Okay, so you're saying that even if you extended parking to that area now, it's, there's no way for you to configure it to allow for more parking spaces? You're saying that it would just make the parking space longer?
That's correct. And that, and then the meantime, we have had those outdoor areas, outdoor seating areas approved by the state and by the village of Los Ranchos as well. So, we have existing outdoor areas that's in that space right now. I'm sorry, those are vital to our business at this point.
Okay, and those are in that same area, adjacent to your business, but in that same area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Schull at this time?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Trustee Raell.
Mr. Schull, the 100-foot area that you're talking about, are your customers parking there now?
Yes, they have been.
And do they extend anymore than the 100 feet?
I have not built, when we went through the planning and zoning hearing and we got approval, we talked about the 100 feet and they approved. I put up some cones that, that, that I guess are over a little bit. Mary next door told me that they're over a little bit. And so those need to be corrected. And, and so they're cones and we did have a very busy Friday night. We had, we had the, the new hops from your agricultural facility and, and we had more people than we expected and they actually parked behind the cones. And the reason I haven't put up a fence is that, is that obviously we haven't gotten a full approval for that. But I'm, you know, I'm doing my best to, to keep people, you know, west of those cones so we don't, we don't disturb our neighbors to the north.
The, excuse me, is the, the reason that you don't, they're using your patios now for the customers outside is the pandemic and that's the reason you're losing so much parking space? Is that right?
No, we, we don't have anybody inside. And so, and so we don't have any, we don't have any more, we don't have any more requirement than we did before. It's, these tracks, these old MRGCD tracks are long and narrow by nature and providing a commercial, commercial parking and having a commercial development in these tracks in the village has always been a challenge. And, and there's, and there's really not that much, there's not that commercial, there's not that much adjoining commercial that you can use to expand, you know, to expand parking. And we have a lot of people that use the trail from the ditch, that walk by neighboring properties, they ride their bikes, they bring their dogs. But, but we are in a, you know, car-driven society and, and we can have four people wanting to meet and have a beer and they drive, you know, four different cars. So, it's just, it's just kind of, you know, I'm sure there's other people up and down Forest Street that's, that parking has been, has been a challenge and we're, and we're definitely one of them.
Yeah, excuse me, on the information you submitted, there was a long list of people that were asking us to approve this. Only two or three indicated they lived in the village. Are the others just customers that come in regularly?
You know, to be honest with you, I, I truly believe that, that over half of our customer base is village residents. We didn't have addresses on that. Maybe that'd have been more helpful. We put emails instead, which my daughter actually helped me bring that up. And so, and so I didn't really have a, you know, the resident, non-resident box. It was just kind of a support, a support petition we kind of did at the last minute before the, before the planning and zoning hearing.
Good, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Raell. Does anyone else have any more questions for Mr. Schull? If not, we have other people who want to speak on this application. Mr. Chris Kenny is the name of the other individual. Are you on, Mr. Kenny?
Mr. Kenny is on and he can unmute himself here.
Hi, Mayor Lopez.
Kenny, before you speak, I'm going to ask Ms. Winter to swear you in. Ms. Winter, please swear in Mr. Greg Kenny. Chris Kenny.
Mr. Kenny, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mr. Chris Kenny. Go ahead.
Mayor Lopez, trustees, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I will be, I will be brief. First, my address, 298 Placitas Road Northwest. I live in the evil empire of Albuquerque, not in Los Ranchos. So, I'll put that out there on, upfront. My wife, however, grew up in Los Ranchos, in the El Caballero neighborhood. And so, I wanted to speak on behalf of the, of Jim's zone change application for a couple of reasons. One, I've known Jim and Kristen for a number of years now. Jim was the assistant coach of my son's Yaffle football team. My son, Thomas, attended Valley High School. We have been longtime supporters and believe very much in supporting local businesses. And as I drive Fourth Street, I must congratulate the, the village for its vision in investing in Fourth Street and trying to revitalize it. I have been working for years with the city of Albuquerque to try to do some similar revitalization of Fourth Street down along our stretch. I live, I live north of Montano and just east of Fourth Street. I'm just south of the Smiths in the Guadalupe center there, trying to do something similar to what you have done. And, you know, when I look, so I frequent hops because it is the type of neighborhood establishment that really represents, in my view, the best of what Albuquerque and the North Valley has to offer its residents. Jim and Kristen have both put in a tremendous amount of work to make both Kristen's salon and hops a, a very conducive establishment for the, for the village. And Jim and Kristen, I know, have invested a tremendous amount of blood, sweat, and tears and money in trying to contribute to the overall quality of life in the village. You know, this is not a neon light establishment that, you know, operates till all hours of the night. I recognize and certainly appreciate the, the desire to maintain the rural integrity of the village. And at the same time, when I drive Fourth Street and I look at, you know, the time and energy and tax dollars that you all have invested in trying to make this corridor an exceptional place to come for people, not just from the village, but also from surrounding areas. I just have to look at what Jim and Kristen are doing and, and I just, I scratch my head when I think that the type of development they are looking to accomplish here might be rejected. And I think your zoning commission took a similar view. I recognize that Tiffany and the department have, have said that this ought not to, their recommendation is that this not be approved. You know, the zoning commission took into account everything that Tiffany reported to you tonight. And, you know, their vote was, you know, no, this is, this is exactly the type of thing that we've invested a whole lot of time, energy, and taxpayer dollars to try to create. So, I would encourage you to continue to try to look to the future for the village and support the type of business that Jim and Kristen have developed along Fourth Street. So, I urge that you approve this in the interest of furthering the village's own project to revitalize this part of Fourth Street. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kenny at this time? If not, we have another individual who wants to speak in favor, Mr. Joe Craig. Are you on the line? Joe Craig?
He's coming on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Winter, please swear in Mr. Craig.
Mr. Craig, good evening. Could you please raise your right hand?
I do.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. I do want to reemphasize that in the Planning and Zoning Commission, we approved the zone running south from AX, AX propane. And even chatted with Commissioner Raleigh, reinforcing that long, long meeting that we had. Mr. Raleigh even indicated he would like to see a road along the Chamosal lateral, opening that rail road. My big concern, and this hasn't come up, is AX propane in the middle of our commercial industrial complex. We had Fourth Street and Second Street shut down at one time because they had a fire. These are massive propane tanks. No one seems to be concerned about that. You know, it's, this is probably our industrial zone in the village, the industrial zone. And to me, it meets exactly what we were trying to do in planning and zoning, what we're doing in the 2020 master plan to encourage businesses to come into the village of Los Ranchos and bring destination, destination customers in. So, I really want to support what Jim and his wife have been doing. I've been there, I think, two or three times. It's a, it's a great facility. Stopped by there with the Fergus's Smash Brew, I believe is what they called it, from our Agri Nature Center, very, and set out back, very quiet, very peaceful, nice, small, low noise, low light kind of facility. I really, I really hope that the trustees will approve this as the Planning and Zoning Commission did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Craig at this time? Being none, is there anyone participating who is opposed that would like to speak? Is Mary Holman on the line?
Stand by as she unmutes.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Ms. Holman?
Mary, can you please raise your right hand?
Yeah, my hand is up.
Thank you so much. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
That I do.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Mary.
Let me say a couple of things. First of all, from what Mr. Craig said, that wasn't a fire. A tree fell on the end of the large propane tank over there and knocked the valve off, and it did cause a problem that lasted over a day over there at the propane farm. And it's a conditional use property, and the underlying property is in residential area. So if someday it ever goes away, hopefully we'll have a wonderful residential area over there. So our concerns, you know, we're directly north of the Schulz property. Our concern is on our residential piece. Mr. Schul, back in 2005, the end of 2005, when he got permission from the village for his conditional use, one of the things that we had brought up was our concern about parking beyond the 300. And although it didn't get into the conditions, it was definitely part of the discussion, and it was in the meeting minutes as well as in the recording. And we were told at that time that if there was any problem with the parking going beyond the 300 feet, that the village would address it at that time. And yet, well, then we've brought it up a number of times now, nothing has been done. So that is our concern that is out there. Before the planning and zoning meeting, Mr. Schul did put up, and this is a few days before it, he did put up a no parking beyond this point sign. And although most people ignored it, but at least it did control that a little bit. But the day before that planning and zoning meeting occurred, he even took that sign down. So parking is not only gone beyond the 300 feet, but the cones that he has up are actually at 436 feet, and they still park beyond that. So right now, he's asking for parking to go to the 400 mark. And we would like to support him in that with the conditions that it is actually enforced, that there is actually a permanent barrier where people can't go beyond that. Because right now, the cones that he is erecting there, they're not making any headway at all. People park well beyond that. And that is right against our residential piece of the property. Our residence line starts at 350 feet, so that would allow him 50 feet beyond where ours starts. And so we feel that that is reasonable. We could live with that 50 feet. Now, I must point out that on page 82 of your packet, he has, or somebody had put in a plot of what it supposedly looks like. And please note that the lines that they put in there are at 150 feet, and that is not what is being requested here. It's only 100 feet in there. And between the Hops and the ponding area, he did erect a very nice outdoor patio right there. But that outdoor patio actually is half in the residential and half in the commercial. And I find it hard to believe that the village would have approved that, being that it's going across the two lines. So our concerns are really about strict enforcement of that extra 100 feet and enforcement of that landscape buffer that would be between our residential line and where the overlap between residential and commercial. So those are the two biggest things that are there on that. You know, there's just got to be a physical barrier erected. Because what we've seen is just night after night, when he has a larger night, people are parking well beyond that. And there hasn't been any effort to mark the property out where that actual 100 feet would be. And as he has already admitted, he hasn't abided by the agreement back even when he got the conditional use not to park beyond the 300. And talking with Tiffany, she has told me that they had, you know, the village had already noticed them about not parking beyond that. Even with the planning and zoning recommendation, it said, don't do it yet, and yet he's still doing it. So we have a concern about how genuine he can actually be in following through on this. We know we want him to have a great, successful business, but not at the expense of our own serenity in our own home. Because not only does it impact the serenity of our home, but it would impact the value of our home. And we feel that that would be a taking on the part of the village.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Holman at this time? Sandra, trustee Pacheco.
Hi, Mary. So from what I'm hearing from you is that you really want to support the extension of this 100 feet with, you know, with kind of conditions in terms of continuing to have your privacy on your property and obviously not extending past that 100 feet that's requested by Mr. Schul. Is that right? I mean, are you?
That is correct. Ultimately, what we would really like, since he doesn't own the property, he's only got a conditional use of the property as it is under the current brewery. You know, we're real reluctant because, as Tiffany stated in her opening report, this will become permanent with the property. You know, ultimately, what we would really like with it to be extended for that 100 feet, conditional upon his continued business, that would be what we would really want. Because we don't know what might come in there next and what kind of, you know, obtrusive, you know, loud. I mean, who knows what kind of business could go in there? And, you know, the village has worked very, very hard over the last 20 years to keep that back portion residential and have more of a live-work type of situation for the residents and the businesses up front of them, such as what we have and many of the others along that pathway have. And so it is concerning to support this because, as a business owner ourselves, we want to support economic development in the village. But at the same time, we have to protect ourselves, and I hope you will consider that.
Understood. Thank you.
Any further questions of Ms. Holman at this time from anyone?
Just a couple of questions, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mary, as I look at the, as I look at the page that you mentioned, on page 92, or as I look at page 92.
Okay.
And, okay.
92. Okay, gotcha.
Right. So as I look in there, I see the Hops facility. And then that's your home that is to the north of that, correct?
Yes, northeast, uh-huh.
All right, northeast to that.
The one kind of at the angle, uh-huh.
Right. And then in front of the home to the west, there are two structures there. What are those two structures?
That is up on the commercial piece. That's on that little L piece you're talking about.
Okay. Yeah, they're just behind the L piece?
Just behind the L piece.
Yeah.
So there's a hay shed there and one of our parked RVs right there.
Okay, all right. And then north of your property, can you explain what's going on there? North of your property, those other two properties, yeah?
Okay, so the one that's on the east side, right there against the Chamosal.
Right.
That is an individual home right there. As a matter of fact, we own it, and we've got it up for sale right now. And just west of that is all of the Giant, well, now it's Speedway property. So they've got just west of the house, that first building, I think it's actually an automotive shed. Oh, it's a warehouse, my husband just told me. And then the larger building east of that, or west of that is actually their Speedway or the former Giant Industries Training Center.
Okay, and?
Those two are conditional use as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from anyone for Ms. Holman? If none, is there anyone else participating who is opposed that would like to speak? If so, please raise your hand. I'll give everyone on the call a moment. And if there is no one, Administrator Ann Simon needs to be sworn in. Are you on, Ann?
Yes.
Ms. Winter, please swear Administrator Ann Simon in.
Ms. Simon, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I think I have made a small error. Ann, you want to talk on 9B, not 9A, is that correct? Okay, let's withdraw what we just said. Is that okay?
Fine.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board of Trustees? And does the Board want to ask Ms. Justice any further questions at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Trustee Recabini.
Thank you. Tiffany, who is the registered owner of the property that is north where the Speedway buildings are?
If you can give me one moment, I'll look into that.
Of that conditional, it's apparently a conditional use?
You need some time, Tiffany, to answer that question?
Yes, I will need a moment, but I'm here for any other questions.
Go ahead.
And then, so I'll hold until I get that particular piece of information from Ms. Justice.
Okay, so the property owner, sorry to interject, is Giant Four Corners, Inc.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Justice at this time?
Yes, I have some.
Go ahead, trustee Lewis.
So, you know, as I, as I understand this, you know, a lot of the concern is with the zone change, what could happen back there? Should Hops go out of business or that they can go forward and do whatever they like back there? So I'm wondering, Tiffany, is there a way to not do a zone change but do some type of variance? I mean, and I guess where I'm trying to get is that, you know, with the development of Fourth Street coming and existing business conditions today, you know, Hops is exactly, in my opinion, what we're looking for on Fourth Street. And I think we want to support them. Now, if we could, you know, I think this additional parking could come in very handy when Fourth Street's being redeveloped in front of their property. And so, you know, I'm looking for a way to give them a variance or some kind of conditional use until Fourth Street is done and until business conditions improve. And then, you know, after the development of Fourth Street, maybe the configuration will be where they'll pick up more spaces in front of their property, et cetera. And so is there a way to restrict this variance or zone change to parking only? I mean, we don't want people parking out along Fourth Street if we denied it. Because, and I think, you know, it's fantastic when you have a business that needs more than the minimum parking because they're being successful. And so my question is, is there, is there an opportune way, is there another way, Tiffany, to approach this to achieve what the Schulz are asking for, for their business? And also to protect the back of the property, you know, and just put it on a short-term basis, pending the development of Fourth Street and, you know, improvement of business conditions?
So trustee Lewis, trustees, Mayor, we have most of the planning and zoning permits that we issue and things that go before the commission and the board are usually permanent because they stay with the property, not necessarily the owner at the time. So with a variance in that case, that would also be something that is usually permanent. And there's also the requirement of meeting criteria of hardship. And many of our hardship criterias are tied with the physical, the physical condition of the lot, the property lines, the way they're configured. A lot of it tends to be a variance due to the constraints of the land in some way. There is the option also of a special use permit. However, we we allow those for uses that are not provided for in any other zone. In this case, it would be a stretch to apply that. For the COVID situation, at least, there may be a route through the mayor's emergency powers granting temporary permits of some kind. And in general, though all of these applications are permanent with the property, the board has the option to put any conditions on an application. So the board could put conditions on approval that could make it that this variance would expire at some point or that this zone change would expire at some point. I personally haven't seen it done, but it is possible.
So question is, is it, did you mention conditional use permit?
Special use.
Or special use. So we could actually approve a special use permit?
Yes. So the definitions of special, so a special use permit is that section of the ordinance lists out uses that are not provided for in other zones. And then there's also a clause for any uses that aren't provided in other zones. You can do these things as well. So in this case, if the use itself is for parking, that would be a stretch of the appliance of the special use because this is something that is allowed in other zones. It's technically allowed in the residential zone, just not in this case for commercial purposes.
So?
So the special use is probably less practical, I would say, compared to the variance or the zone change.
And there's no conditional use?
It is possible to have a conditional use on a property. And those are usually identified with the zoning. So there's a list of conditional uses that are allowed for residential zones. This includes things like guest houses or mobile homes as temporary dwellings. There is not a conditional use clause for commercial parking.
Usually, or period?
Period. The conditional use language in the code, basically each zone has a list of conditional uses that apply to that zone. And so when you apply for a conditional use, you are applying for one of those that is allowed in that zone. If you're asking for something that isn't a permissive use or a conditional use in that zone, you usually are asking for a variance of some kind or a special use permit.
Parking is an accessory use, if I understand it correctly?
Yes. So an accessory use for a residential property. It, in this case, because it would be an accessory use commercially, it would be considered commercial. Parking is allowed in both residential and commercial zones. And so the distinction at this point is the purpose of the parking. And so the distinction at this point is the purpose of the parking.
So again, Tiffany, my, my, my inclination is, is, I mean, again, going by the master plan, by a lot of the things written, our instructions by the master planner to support and encourage business along Forest Street. And Hops is exactly, and the, and the hair salon are exactly what we're looking for. I understand and, and my inclination at this time would be not, if we don't have to do a zone change, to not do a zone change, but to give them some kind of, one, relief during this COVID time, two, to encourage the growth of their business, three, understand that they've got more coming to them when we start doing Forest Street. And, and so is there a way to limit it to the end of construction? Because that, by that time also, given once we see what they pick up in parking or lose in parking with Forest Street, and that gives them time to decide if there's any way to take out landscaping and put in more parking. I just think there's a lot of variables over the next five years or something that if there's a way for us to do it in the form of not a zone change, but, I mean, I would support a zone change if that's the only option. But I think there's got to be another option, whether it's the mayor's special powers or putting some kind of restrictions in a variance that's tied to the end of the development of Forest Street or the redevelopment of Forest Street or something along that lines. Am I, am I on the right track here?
Got a comment as well?
I think, Trustee Lewis, I think you're, that kind of the thought that I have, can we approve something that would allow them to to have a parking as long as Hops is, is a business there and if they should close, that, that it would go away at that time? So it wouldn't be a permanent zone change. Would that be possible, Tiffany?
Yes. Trustee Rial, trustees, again, the Board can put conditions on any application. And a condition for this zone change could be that it is only until, only for the duration that Hops brewery is at this location. However, I will also say that, so usually with the zone change, you get more development opportunities, more options. And with that, you have to do a site development plan or site development plan amendment if you're doing a redevelopment. And so even if this zone change itself is temporary, the site development plan would also still need to be approved by the Commission and the Board in order to use that portion commercially. So in that case, I, I think it would, it would, I think, be more burdensome for the applicant in that case because then they would be getting the temporary zone change, but they would still need to do, go through the process of the site development plan to make sure they comply with the, with the requirements of the C1 zone. And then if they were to leave, the site development plan still applies over that or it's also approved temporarily. And then it has to revert back to the original site development plan.
But Tiffany, I mean, if, if they go that route, well, I guess there's not really another route, right? I mean, the way that you've spoken, this is kind of the only route to take with conditions to make it a temporary zoning change. So can the conditions that we list, if we do go that route, can they also address the site plan? The future of the site plan, development plan, I mean, can we put those kind of conditions in this as well?
So, Trustee Pacheco, Trustee Mayor, usually we try to keep the conditions of the zone change separate from the site development plan, just because the zone, at, at, at the time of the zone change, usually what the applicant has is conceptual for the site plan. So they don't have anything clear cut yet. So we don't want to put on them a condition that they cannot fulfill when it comes down to actually putting together the plan. We can have a condition that the, if, if the zone change itself is temporary, that any site development plan or site development plan amendments are also temporary.
So we could limit this to parking only at this time without coming forward with a new site development plan? I mean, I, I understand people's concerns for not wanting to approve this, you know, additional 100 feet and anything could happen back there. But I also don't want to burden any small business in the village at this time and, and encourage them in every way we can to keep operating as a business. So I'm trying to get my head around, it would be a zone change with conditions or time limits tied to either the length of their business or Forest Street development or something like that?
That is possible. I will, I will say that my recommendation would be that they still have some kind of site development plan amendment for the back portion that it would be now temporarily commercial because there are, basically they would be changing part of the existing site development plan. And I think it would be beneficial for everybody involved to know how much parking exactly would be back there to still ensure that there would be emergency vehicle access. The original site plan had the pond there to make sure that the pond doesn't change. So it would make sense for the applicant to still have some kind of site plan for that section.
Even if it's temporary?
Yes. But the, I guess, the complication in that is whether the applicant should be required then to meet all of the requirements of the C1 zone. If they are going to be meeting all of the requirements to the C1 zone in that site development plan, then they've basically done all the work of having that as though it were permanent, but still the possibility of it being revoked at some point. So like if, if there is requirements for landscape buffering, for pavement of any kind, adjusting of the site develop, of the grading and drainage plan, that will still stay on that property even after expiration of the zone change and the site development plan. So those improvements would be there, but the allowance would no longer be.
And, and if we just approved the zone change, they don't have to do any site development change at this time?
No, no. So I, I, with a permanent zone change, they would have to do a site development plan amendment or site development plan depending on the extent of their changes. If it is truly parking, it would be a site development plan amendment, which would be publicly noticed to everybody within 300 feet. If there is adverse comment, it goes before the Commission for approval. So, and then, and basically they still have to meet the C1 zone requirements.
So they're having to do the same work. Basically, they just don't know if it's temporary or not. But it's, again, if they're out of business or they leave the property, they're out of business anyway. They're not having to go back and re-change it. Is that correct?
Yes. But I guess, so with commercial properties, I guess the purpose of the site development plan is usually so that there is consistent development between property owners. So that there is a consistent plan for that site regardless of who owns it or who is in which building. We allow temporary uses, like conditional uses for certain businesses that are within some of the buildings, but usually the site itself can stay the same regardless of who owns it with, with the site development plan. It, it kind of ensures, ensures consistency between ownership.
Sure. But because we're adding parking back there, can we put restrictions on an amended zone change? If we, if we prove this zone change, I, I guess it's an amended site plan that they would have to do?
Yes.
And we could put our restrictions on that?
Yes, I would say if it is a time basis or something to do with the Forest Street construction, that it be consistent on both the zone change itself and the site development plan amendment. Or that the, the zone change has a condition that the site development plan amendment would also be temporary. But in this case, I, I believe that variances, special use permits, zone changes, those tend to be tied to the property. And making them temporary uses, conditional uses are also tied with the property as well. Making those temporary uses, I guess it just kind of confuses the process a little bit. I think this is something related to COVID, at least it can be temporarily approved, similar to temporary approvals for tents and parking lots that are commercial right now. If those were to become permanent structures, that would change the site plan. And so we would need a changed site plan for that. And so if it is something that is temporary, it can, at least during COVID, fall under, fall under the mayor's emergency powers. Possibly as a temporary use permit or something along those lines.
And can the redevelopment of Forest Street fall into that same as COVID? I mean, there's a lot of changes going to be coming to Forest Street. There's a lot of changes going to be around there and impacting their business in the next four or five years. So is that not unreasonable to tie it at this time to getting Forest Street done and then revisiting the issue on if it needs to be permanent parking? Or they decide they're redoing their parking lot or they pick up parking along the street? Is that, is that a doable thing?
I believe that is doable. I actually, at, at this point, if we are talking about applying one of our current applications to this particular case, though it would be an interpretation of the language itself, I think that the special use permit would be the most appropriate because those do tend to be tied to particular uses and they do sometimes have expiration dates. We, in, in this case, the requirements for a special use is that they aren't adequately controlled or allowed in other zones relative to the specific site. In this case, it could be argued that the C1 and the R2, they're, they're, though both allow accessory uses of parking, the fact that they're, that one is used for residential, one is used for commercial creates a conflict. There are other criteria of the special use permit. One is that the use is not detrimental to the neighborhood and another is that it, the use is beneficial to the village in accordance with the master plan.
I'd like to interject. Mr. Schul, who's already been sworn in, would like to comment. Is the governing body okay with that?
Yes.
Jim Schul, please say your comment.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So when I did my original application, my intent has always been to, you know, to just have, you know, more parking and not to, not to create a, a future, a future development all the way back to the ditch. And that's why my understanding, when I talked to, I talked to Tiffany, and it's probably my misunderstanding, was that, that I could only apply for, for the commercial use to go all the way back to the ditch without doing, without doing a replat and creating another lot that I couldn't ask for, for X amount of parking. So, so my original, our, our original request was to ask for C1 to go all the way back to the ditch. The reason that I picked the 150-foot line that you saw in that original application was that's where Mary's front courtyard wall starts. I didn't want the parking to be adjacent to the Holman's house. And so that's how I came up with the 150. Then we met with Mary, a man, Jim, Sunday before the P and Z hearing, and we agreed, they wanted to help me. I still wanted the 150. I still thought we needed that much parking and, and they said, you know, they kind of have a hard time with that. Their commercial goes back 350 feet. And so, and so, and so, and so we agreed that, that they could live with the 100 feet and we could live with the 100 feet. So, um, so that's why I amended that request to go to the hearing and cut it back to 100. When I started the process, I asked Tiffany, I mean, the city of Albuquerque used to have like a P1 zone where you could just ask for parking and that's what I wanted to get, was just, was just a parking zone. Well, Village doesn't have that. You either have, you have full-blown commercial or you have residential. And there isn't a P1 zone. If we had a P1 zone, you know, that would have been the easiest thing because that would tie me into only providing a parking for that zone, which is all I really wanted to do in the first place. But I think, you know, I think you're, I think your concern is very warranted. You know, we do, yes, we, we don't own it, we're tenants. We do have an option to buy it. We've spent improving both properties, the excess is $100,000. So we're not planning on going anywhere. And so we do, we do want to be there. But, you know, I think, I think the catch-all is that it has to have an approved site development plan. And with a site development plan, that, you know, if we get approved tonight, then, then like that's our next step. Oh, we have Mary's support. She has, she'll be in that process. She'll make sure that we have our landscape buffering and our solid wall and that we have a barrier to go back. I would like it to be an open fence to go back because our customers enjoy looking at the open space back there. But it can still be like a barrier where cars can't pull back there. But I think anybody else that, that has to come back in has to get another site development plan. And so they just can't start building apartments the next day or anything else. They have to come back to like a site development plan. And I would much rather do that than to have a temporary use based on the construction. Because I might pick up, you know, we're 108 feet wide, we have a large entrance there. We might pick up two parking places in front of us, depending on light poles and stuff like that. You know, that's not going to replace the parking in 100 feet on the back of our, the back of our deal. I'm going to have to put landscaping in, I'm going to have to put a fence, I'm going to have to do some stuff. And so I don't really want to tie it to COVID because, because we need that space. Hopefully, when COVID goes away and we can have, you know, a successful business. So I'm fine with tying it to Hops. If, if, if we don't exercise our option to purchase and Hops goes aways or brew pub and somebody else comes in. But if you have, if you have an approved site plan that says parking only and that's what you approve, then I think that's your insurance policy that, that, you know, this isn't going to get out of control. And if we had a P1 zone, you, you, this would have been easier on all of us. That's all my intentions was ever, was to do parking. I wanted 150. I, I, you know, willed that out to the front of their courtyard wall to be a good neighbor. That's where I came up with the 150 and we cut it back to 100. We negotiated with our neighbors. She's in support of it. And, you know, I think that a site development plan is your insurance that it won't be developed in something that you guys will not approve of.
Thank you, Mr. Schul. Thank you very much. Any further questions for Ms. Justice?
Yes, Mayor, the, Ms. Justice, in the, in the 100 feet right behind the Mayor, the Ms. Justice, in the in the 100 feet right behind the brewery right now, you noted that there was ponding there. That that ponding could be moved further back, is that correct? Toward the ditch?
So trustee Ricabini, trustees, mayor, if they were to move the ponding, that would acquire a new grading and drainage plan for the site, which in general tends to be more expensive than than people want to do, which is usually why they tend to be tied to the site development plan. The ponding can go further back on the property. However, that would involve grading more of that property.
Okay, all right. So so just some comments. I haven't commented yet about about any of this. I've asked a few questions. I think that the Shoals are exactly what this village needs back there. We've revitalized Fourth. It's obviously popular. We're bringing it, they got creative in this time and they opened up those beautiful landscape areas as outdoor seating. I I don't, I I really don't want to hold them to any minimum parking requirements. So I think I should be asking more about maximum parking, parking considerations for employees, clients and customers. What, but before I go any any further, do we do we have any kind of of requirements for occupancy on outdoor spaces?
Tiffany?
Are you are you talking in general or for COVID specifically?
In general. Is there any any? I know we have occupancy in buildings capacity. Do we have any capacity for outdoor spaces? Not 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 talking about COVID.
So the village code does not have anything specific to that. I think that would be something that would be more for the fire department or the international fire code and the international building code. There's no building, there's no building code, but I believe it would be more.
So it'd be safety, safety related. So so the Shoals would have to always follow required safety and commercial or fire protection, safety protection, things like that, as would be as would be dictated by by rules then on any outdoor spaces as well as indoor spaces, right? So I I think that they're being very creative in 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 having their business thrive during a time when, I mean, it's wonderful to sit outside in the village. It's a great place, right? So I I also look at this lot as being difficult in my mind. It's a, it's almost like a tripa and it's very narrow. It it's got, it's got some problems with it from a from a commercial space requirement. It also has some problems with it with that back area ever going to any kind of residential in my mind. You know, I I hate to continue to see it being just a a patch of 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 trees kind of going wildly back there. I would be, I would be in favor of a full zone change and allow whatever use is is warranted back there to help that business. And then in even even parking, then I would even consider parking going a little bit further back, even than the 100 feet. Because with with proper with a proper site plan and sound wall and and so on and so forth, that might 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 help out that. I'd like us to help this business and help the village to continue to bring in people from outside the village and have it be a destination. And I really do applaud the Shoals for for their creativity under difficult times. It took them a while to open that place up. And boy, when they did, they sure did a good job. So kudos to them. And those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Justice? Then the floor is now closed for comments. I need a motion.
I would make a motion to approve this zone change request.
I need a second.
All second.
Any discussion at this time?
I'd like, I'd like to put some conditions on this. The condition that they don't, they only allow 100 feet of parking and they have some kind of permanent barrier there, the parking beyond the 100 feet. And also to have the landscaping that's required by the neighbors on the north. I would like to add that to the motion if it's acceptable.
Is it acceptable?
It's acceptable to me. I I think that'll be part of the site plan, but I have no problem putting those conditions.
I'd like to allow, that's fine, as long as the, as long as if they choose to move that that ponding back further, that that they'd be allowed to do that, move that back into that back section so that they can open it up to parking.
Is that acceptable to you, trustee Lewis?
I I think that's got to be something subject to just a grading and drainage plan at some point.
Yeah.
I don't think we can put in this that that's allowable. I I think it would just be subject to them coming and saying, here, we're going to spend the time and money to do a new grading and drainage plan. And here's our proposal. And then that's that's another issue.
Okay, we have a motion that's been amended. We have a second. Do you agree with with the amendment? Trustee Rayel's amendment, trustee Ricabini?
Can you, can you repeat it again, please? Let me, make the new motion, please, Pablo.
And then the motion to allow the 100-foot parking provided that they provide a permanent structure of some kind that would not not allow parking beyond the 100 feet. And also do the landscaping to the north that would buffer the the neighbors to the north.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion at this time? I'm going to call for the question. Call for the roll call vote, trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Motion has passed, Mr. Schul.
You forgot one more.
You forgot, trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We now move to 9B. Discussion and public input of the 2022-2026 Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, parentheses ICIP for the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque. Now we get to swear in Administrator Anne Simon. Ms. Ms. Winter, please swear in Ms. Simon.
Ms. Simon, I'm going to swear you in again. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Anne.
Yes, mayor, trustees. Thank you. We are now discussing the presentation of the first draft of the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, for the Village of Los Rancho. This is a plan that you may all recall. You looked at last year. It is something that every community is asked to put together. It goes to the legislature and the legislature looks at this plan when it considers funding for every community. So it behooves us to make sure that our plan, our infrastructure projects are on the plan, that they are, that they have been updated appropriately and that everything is on them. So last year, as you may recall, from what I understand, because we didn't have an administrator, we were sort of scrambling to get our plan to the legislature and had an emergency meeting in October to approve the list. This time, we're we're getting out in front. We are presenting this list to you now just to consider the projects that we floated last year. We will keep this item open until we have to bring it back to you in October for final approval. So with that, I stand for questions.
I have, mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
And this is the first, this is first draft, you said?
Yes.
But you are going to change the dates on page 139 and the person responsible or contact to your name, is that correct? Instead of to McDonough?
Yes, trustee Rayel and and mayor and other trustees. I misspoke when I said it's the first draft. This is actually last year's list. So we have this presented to you just as a as a jumping off point.
Okay, so this would become 2022 to 2026.
That's correct.
Okay. But I do have a question on on page 140.
Okay.
On 141. It shows zero funding to date and funding requested 2021 to 2024. On page 141 shows project start date of 5 to 20, 2020. So if we don't have any funding, how could we have started the project in May of 2020? Is that the engineering money that we have that we're working on or?
I believe it is.
Yeah, I have to get to that. I apologize. So we did receive, trustee Rayel and mayor and trustees, we received a grant, as you may recall, from the
An MDOT.
Transportation. And we are using that grant money to pay for the cultural survey, the ALTA survey, the alignment and all of the sort of pre-design work that we have to do before we get into design of the second phase of Fourth Street. So maybe that's why. I don't know why we didn't have any funding listed there. This is last
It's last year's, it's last year's, Anne.
That's
That's why.
That's why.
Well, I guess that's fine. It just needs to be corrected to show that
Right.
Thank you. We will definitely do that.
And that's all I have.
Okay. It's time for me to ask this question. Is there anyone participating in the Zoom call wishing to provide ideas, suggestions or input on the FY 2022 ICIP? If so, please raise your hand.
There is no hands raised.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or input from the Board of Trustees?
Sure, I'll be glad to comment.
Trustee Lewis?
Anne, a couple of things. One, I just, I want to make sure the village hall renovation is for just the village hall, not any other property is at this point.
Trustee Lewis and mayor and others, right now it is only village hall, yes.
And and the other thing I would just suggest, it seems to me that as we get started into the village center, there will be some some infrastructure, something, roadwork, who knows what that we will
Right.
be responsible for. And I would strongly recommend we include something as you get along with your discussions with the developer, that we have some in there for village center expenses.
That's a good idea.
Those are, that's my comments.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Trustee Pacheco.
So all of these are revisable up until, up until the time that we have to approve them, correct?
That is correct.
That'll be up through November?
Actually, we'd like to have it brought before the board. Anne, am I correct, in September?
I believe October is what we were, we are shooting for, so we have
Okay, then October.
Mayor and trustees, this is Danielle. Our deadline to submit ICIP for this next round is September 18th. So our plan is to bring it to the board September 9th with updated projects and if anything fell off or if we need to add any new ones to this list.
And I think we can do that. Further comments?
Okay, thank you. That that was just my question.
Okay, great. Any further questions on the ICIP? The floor is now closed for comments. Administrator Simon will take the input from this hearing, evaluate and adjust priorities if needed. The final ICI projects will be presented for the board approval at the September meeting. Thank you. Item 10 is old business, there is none. Item 11 is announcements. 11A, Notice of Intent, parentheses NOI, Section 13-6-1, Disposition of Obsolete, Worn-Out or Unusable Tangible Personal Property. Clerk Danielle Sadio Molina, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and trustees. The notice of intent is just to make you aware of the plans for the disposition of obsolete, worn-out or unusable tangible tangible property that is no longer of service to the village. Specifically, this equipment was old equipment that was at the Unser Museum and hadn't been used in years. Most of the equipment was 10-plus years old, including old computers with hard drives removed, printers, projector. And then there's some other items that the village has that we're ready to dispose of, such as some old furniture and machinery. Many of the items will be permanently destroyed. However, if there are any items deemed no value but possibly usable, they may be considered for donation to a 501(c)(3). The facilities maintenance staff and I will be preparing an inventory list. And I encourage and request any member of the governing body to join in the oversight of the process. Please let me know if you're interested and we can schedule a date to inventory the equipment. I'll be presenting the list along with a resolution to you in September for your approval to proceed with the disposition. Once approved, I will submit the proposed disposition property list to the state auditor's office for their approval. After the approval, the village can then dispose of the property in whatever manner we choose. So this was just to let you know that what the plans are for the village and all that old equipment. If anybody's interested in joining me and in looking at it and kind of giving it a once-over before we get rid of it, let me know and we can schedule some dates to take a look at it and and get that list together for presentation in September.
Thank you very much, Danielle. We're going to now move to item 12, new business. 12A, pursuant to Section 3-11-6, parentheses 1, NMSA 1978, the mayor shall submit for confirmation the names of persons who shall be employed by the municipality to the Board of Trustees for approval. One, confirmation of Amelia Hinojós, front desk receptionist, administrative assistant. Administrator Anne Simon, it's your, can you describe this recommendation, please?
Yes, thank you, mayor and trustees. We're really delighted to have Amelia at our front desk. She's a warm, welcoming face to our village residents. She's a longtime resident of the South Valley and New Mexico. She was raised in a farming family and feels very at home in our agricultural village. Her grandfather taught her farming. She speaks Spanish. She's very hardworking and we're, we're, we just love her. So we're grateful for your approval.
Thank you, Anne. I need a motion.
I move approval.
I need a second.
Tom?
All second. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion at this time? Call for the question. Call for the roll call vote, trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Thank you. Amelia is our new front desk and administrative assistant. Thank you very much. 12B, discussion only. CARES Act Grants to Businesses, Section 4.1.2, Mayor Powers and Duties. Parentheses 1, supervise the drafting and execution of mutual aid Parentheses 1, supervise the drafting and execution of mutual aid agreements in cooperation with representatives of the state and other local political subdivisions of the state and the drafting and execution of any agreements with the County of Bernalillo and other municipalities within Bernalillo County for the countywide coordination of emergency management efforts. Administrator Simon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Trustees. As you may know, we, we were given, the state of New Mexico was, was given significant CARES Act funding from the federal government and made that available to local governments for, for two reasons. One, to reimburse local governments for expenses they have incurred to create COVID-safe environments. And number two, if they chose or choose to provide grants to small businesses. And we heard continually throughout this pandemic that we were to think outside of the box, to think creatively. And this was direction that you all gave to staff and that we wanted to help our struggling businesses, especially those on Fourth Street who have suffered and, and withstood a lot of pain and suffering during construction of the Fourth Street project and then had to shut down. We also lost revenue when our restaurants, inns and liquor stores and other retail establishments had to completely shut down. So this was a way that we could give back in a small way, some of the lost revenue and expenses that, that some of our small businesses had to incur. So we set up a grant. We applied for $2.1 million. And we will know if we receive this funding on August 21st and we will let you know right away. What we had to submit to the state was a plan of how we would evaluate eligible businesses. We had to set up a committee. We had to identify an application process and otherwise set up some, some processes that assured that we were, that we were evaluating businesses and only providing these grants, these mini-grants to eligible businesses. We asked for 2.1 million because we were able to ask for a little bit more to help with the administration of this program. As you know, we have a small, hard-working staff and we didn't want to put any more undue pressure on staff. So we were able to develop a partnership with the Mid-Region Council of Governments. And we have another entity in our back pocket if, if we need one. So we're excited to be able to provide these small $5,000 grants to businesses of 50 or fewer employees. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion amongst the governing body about what we're doing?
Can I just ask a question, Ann? Mayor, Trustees? Did you, is there already a list of businesses that we would consider providing these funds to? Or is it just any business in the Village of Los Ranchos?
As, Trustee Pacheco and Mayor and Trustees, we did look at all of the businesses that would qualify and we have about 400 that could apply. And we wanted to keep it as open as possible and not really limited. If they have received funding from Bernalillo County, they're not eligible. If they're over 50 employees, they're not eligible. So there's a few other things that make them ineligible, but we just wanted to give as many businesses as possible the opportunity.
And is there, is there a possibility that we would receive less than the 2.1 million? Or is that, you know, you either get it all or you don't get any of it?
I'm, Trustee Pacheco, I, and Mayor, I, I'm hoping that we get some. And I was told that, that our request was not unreasonable. So
Great.
I can kind of add to that, Ann and Trustee Pacheco. Other communities are asking for similar amounts of money based upon their size. And so we're right there kind of with the other communities. So I think the state's going to be generous. I certainly hope so. I was on a call with the other mayors, New Mexico Municipal League and the Acting Secretary of DFA, Debbie Romero. And she made the comment to me that we were going to get an answer right away, which means we're going to get an answer like probably within a week. Okay?
That's great.
Yes. Any other discussion amongst the trustees about CARES Act?
Ann, what are, what are some of the things, what are some of the requirements to, for a small business to receive a grant?
Trustee Lewis and others, we have an application. They have to be a registered business. They have to provide some financial information. They have to tell us if they've received any other CARES Act funding, if they've received the Paycheck Protection Program Loan or the IDOL Loan, which is the Economic Hardship Loan. And it's a pretty long application. I'd be happy to share it with the trustees. And we modified it to work with our village businesses. So so we'll set up a committee to evaluate the, the expenses that are reimbursable include setting up patios, creating plexiglass barriers, any kind of personal protective equipment that was purchased, those kinds of things, anything that was, you know, an expense incurred to, to keep businesses open in a COVID-safe manner.
So the other programs would, that PPP, et cetera, would not preclude them from getting this? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Some of the other grants that have been offered wouldn't, if they've, if they've received those grants, it would not preclude them from getting this $5,000 additional grant from the village. Is that correct?
Trustee Ricabini, that is correct. We will not exclude them. We may prioritize and give some of our smaller businesses that were not able to get the PPP loans higher. But no, it does not preclude them. The only thing that would preclude them is if they get money, monies from Bernalillo County.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at up to 450 businesses then?
400.
Not 400.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the governing body? Thank you. We're going to go to 13, Trustee Informal Discussion. The roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Riel.
I just have a question regarding Eliseo Trillo that I talked to you about. Were you able to figure out why the water was on?
Yes. Ann, did you want to describe our, what we did on Fourth Street? You know, that water, the broken irrigation line?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Trustee Riel. That was, it's my understanding that there was an something happened when the poles were being installed by Bradbury Stamm and one of the lines broke. And they, it took them a little while to identify which line broke. And they shut off all of the, of the water lines until they identified the broken line. So it's my understanding that they do have that under control now.
And it looks pretty good now, Trustee Riel.
But at both locations? Because there is one on Bledsoe and one on Pueblo Salamo.
Well, I never knew about the one on Bledsoe, so maybe I should contact Eliseo and find out about that one. I, I was never aware of that one.
Yeah.
And I can do that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The, 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 the speed board sign that you're putting up on, on Fourth and, and Ortega, is that something that was discussed with the neighbors there and they're in agreement that that would help the situation or? Do you know?
You know, I, I'm not sure, Ann, if I want to take that or Fred.
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and take that. Trustee Riel and Mayor and others, we had received a lot of phone calls and letters and complaints from the residents along Ortega that the speeds were so high on Fourth Street that they were having difficulty exiting Ortega onto Fourth Street and they wanted us to take a look at that intersection. The first thing we did is put a speed board there. If it's not there now, it's being moved there. We also are working with the Mid-Region Council of Governments to do a traffic analysis and they're going to both look at the quantity of traffic, the speeds and sort of a general assessment of some traffic calming measures in addition to kind of what's, what the current conditions are. And we also met with Bernalillo County and they are really interested also in that intersection as it's right up against the county border. So they will be working with us to help us mitigate that situation.
That's good. And did you have some discussions with the neighborhood association on the northwest corner of the intersection? I know they had emailed Village regarding that, their concerns there.
And you wrote a letter to, to, to that fellow, Jim, or Mr. Ross, I believe. So yes, we, I think we have.
And hopefully we'll have a lot more information once we get the results of the Mr. Cog's study.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Trustee Lewis.
The only thing I have is, is I just want to know if we are making progress on the short-term rental issue. We're getting close to a year on that issue and I think we owe it to the village residents to, to address it sooner rather than later. And that's my comment I have.
Okay. We'll certainly take a quick look at that. I'll be talking to Tiffany and Ann. Trustee Pacheco.
Ann, I guess I just wanted to ask with regard to, I know that you were putting together Business Economic Committee. Has that come to fruition? Are we any further along with that committee than we have been? And, and now that we're really talking, you know, supporting our, our businesses here in the village, I think it's just more important than ever to get that moving forward.
Yeah, Trustee Pacheco and Mayor and others, I, I couldn't agree more. I had a great grand plan to get everybody together and do a big meeting and we were not able to do that because of our pandemic situation. Then we decided to hold off on contacting businesses for, for a Zoom or other sort of town hall meeting until we had a better sense of the business renewals. And Jennifer was updating our, our, our business software. So we kind of held off on that. And, and now that we have an opportunity to do some outreach for this grant program, I think it's a great time to talk about what we hope to accomplish and how we want to create a network, a sort of a communication network. And if you are interested in putting together a letter with me, I, I'd love to, I know you were one of the, my first volunteers, so I would love to, to get together with you offline and maybe we could put together a letter. You and the mayor could do a joint letter as a, as a, as a hello.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Trustee Pacheco?
No, that's it.
Okay. Trustee Ricabini.
Just a quick one. The, we had our meeting last month at Village Hall.
Yes.
And I thought that went very well.
Yes.
There, and we're having our meeting now like this on Zoom. Reason for the, reason for the change? Is this, is this simpler or?
No, I think there's several reasons. And, and I can only offer this. The governor extended her order until the end of August. So we thought because of that, it would be prudent to go ahead and have this meeting via Zoom. And Administrator Simon and I and Fred Rodasovich will be sitting down, you know, right after the, this next version of the governor's extended public health order, if there is one, to make a decision about how, what we want to do in September or October. I do think this style of meeting works quite well. And I think as long as the governor's orders are in effect, we may be better off with Zoom, but I certainly request the Board of Trustees to give me input.
And if I could also jump, jump in, Mayor, and explain a little also. Last month, we really wanted you all to see the budget. We wanted all to be together
Right.
and talk face-to-face about our budget, which was really important. In this case, we had this, this, this public hearing. And the public hearings have been working really well through the Planning and Zoning Commission process to do remotely. And it keeps the public out of Village Hall and it keeps everybody safe. And we have the technology to do this remotely. And it's actually easier to do all Zoom versus a hybrid approach where we would have to set up mics on the tables and, you know, create barriers between us and, and then keep the public out. It is a little trickier and we have the technology to do it this way and we thought we would go ahead with this format.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Trustee Ricabini?
No, there's not.
One final comment from me. There was a magnificent article about aligning our agri-future in the Las Cruces Sun News over the weekend. And I believe it was sent to you by Sabrina Apodaca, our new administrative assistant. I hope you read it.
Yes.
We're getting press. There's a lot of excitement that's starting to build at the Agri Nature Center. You're seeing the, the weekly updates that we're getting from Fergus and Sabrina. And I can tell you that when next year rolls around and we don't have COVID anymore, I certainly hope, we'll be kind of back to where we were maybe in 2019 and maybe even a little bit better. So if you haven't read that article, please read it. That's all I have. I'm going to adjourn the meeting now. I need a motion and a quick second.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Meeting is adjourned. The time is 9:42 PM, August 12th, 2020. Thank you.
All right, everybody.